Good morning, everyone. My name's Nichelle Hall and we are at another episode of Meet Your Candidate with our Washoe County GOP podcast. Today's candidate is Melanie Sutton, who is running for school board trustee. And what is the district that you're running in?
District C.
District C. And what does that kind of cover?
So that's the North Valley, Spanish Springs area and all the rules. Like my district goes all the way up to Gerlach, the Oregon border.
Fantastic, fantastic. So um, to to introduce Melanie properly, I want to say that uh she is a um, a recent person who's moved here. She's lived here about five years. She homeschools her children. Um, she has attended Washoe County School Board meetings for at least two years now. And so she's, you know, gotten to be pretty well versed in what goes on at those meetings. So she can share her perspective as a mom of kiddos um with us today. And she has a great website that I want everybody to visit. And that is Suttonforwashoecountyschooldistrict.com.
W C S D dot com.
Okay, so S U T T O N F O R W C S D dot com. And on her website, she states, as a member of the new Washoe County School Board, I will bring enthusiasm, energy and passion. My goal is to dismantle the current dysfunctional school board and rebuild it. We know our kids are not receiving the quality education they need and deserve. And I intend to bring our focus back to improving academics. So we're gonna, we're gonna jump right into our first question on that with Melanie. So digging deeper a little bit into that statement, Melanie. Um, I understand why you and so many parents feel like the academics have really fallen through the floor at our schools. Because we know that for years and years and years and years, um, Washoe County School District's standing is at about forty ninth or fiftieth in the state. Even though they tried to put out different numbers, that's, that's what everybody knows full well, in fact. And so parents want their kids to graduate with a solid foundation in academics. So when you say you would dismantle the dysfunction going on in the board, what does that look like to you?
Well, within like the last few years that I've gone to all the school boards and spoke, uh, they've only, they've only talked about our kids' academics once. Uh, Jeff has asked for it to be brought up again, time and time again. No one will second it.
Jeff Church?
Jeff Church, yes. So uh, I just wanna get back to the basics. We don't need all these extra committees for share and it, you know, I just wanna get back to the basics and focus on our kids' education, build them up, get them excited to learn again.
Okay, so a lot of committees, a lot of activities that are not focused on reading, writing, arithmetic, social studies, government, what have you, technology. And so you wanna bring the focus into academics. What a concept. Um, hmm, so I, I can recall from a couple of years ago when Krista McNeil was our superintendent. Um, she put out a letter to parents and I, I remember reading that she was going to be so proud of graduating sixty four thousand social justice warriors. And that was her statement in this letter that went out. And you know, it did not say, I'll be so proud of graduating future, you know, teachers or writers, God forbid, or college professors, doctors, attorneys, nurses, you know, no. The focus was on graduating social justice warriors. And I just want parents to really queue in on this shift of the focus in our schools being on one of the items, social justice warriors. Why would a school system want to have that be their focus? To create social justice warriors upon graduation?
Because they want to fundamentally change our, our country. Our country is the best country in the world. And they don't like it, unfortunately. And they're, they just wanna destroy it. And it scares me to death because I have four children. And I, I, I've only been homeschooling this, going on the third year homeschooling. And I changed, I, the reason why I pulled him out is because of what's going on in our school district. When COVID happened, I got to see right in my face what they were doing toward children. So that's why I'm running and that's why I pulled my children out of school. Because even though my kids are still homeschooled, they're still going to sports and going to activities with kids that are in school. And it, it kinda concerns me that those kids will share with my children what they're learning in school.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. You know, and like when we say social justice warriors, this is like the libs of TikTok crowd, I suppose, because they are self-proclaimed social justice warriors. So these are folks that have been indoctrinated with CRT, Critical Race Theory, and hold that white people are racist. You know, your, your neighbor that's white, they're white, they're a racist. You know, let's hate on them. Let's be divided as Americans, because white people are racist. I mean, certainly, certainly, there's gonna be a white person out there in the world that's racist, but there's gonna be a darker skinned person that could be racist. So it's just ridiculous to be teaching children in school racism. You're teaching them racism. So.
Yeah, the only, the only purpose any of our schools should be doing and the only, the only function that they should have is educating and training our children to be successful adults. Bring back metal shop, all the play, I mean, all the, all the tech schools. Not this stuff. Like we can save so much money and pay our teachers better and pay our bus drivers better. And so we can get bus drivers if we focused on our children.
Mm hmm, for sure. Right. Because if you think about it, does it, you know, parents listening, does it make our country stronger to teach and preach hate at school where you're supposed to be?
Well, they're dividing all of us.
They're dividing all of us. They're dividing the country. They're weakening the country. That is what children are swimming in every day when they go to school. That's what they're breathing. That's the input and then that's gonna be their output. Okay? Instead of unifying our country, instead of raising them up to excellence?
Yes.
You know, and, and Melanie, before the cameras started to roll, was touching on just the lowering of standards, the lowering of, of.
And they say, they say it's for equity. Um, I don't believe in equity. I believe in, in equality. And with, by lowering the standards for all of the children, that's not helping the black community. That's not helping the Hispanic community. It's just lowering it for everybody. Well, why wouldn't we want our children to be excellent and be? I mean, I know as a mother, I want my child to be more successful than I was, or I am. That, you know, doesn't every parent want that? But they're not doing that to our children. They're lowering the standards.
Right, they're lowering the standards. That's not what makes America great, lowered standards. No, we need to raise up the standards. You know, and I had just recently heard from a middle schooler that in his um, advanced placement math class, he sat near a boy who he knew um, did not have the grades to be at that math level in that class. But he told me that the reason why that child was in that class is because there was a shortage of teachers and they had to rotate kids into classrooms based upon the lack of teachers. So why do we have a lack of teachers? You know, the school district may say, oh, because we don't pay them well enough. Okay, but I believe that there are other reasons why we don't have teachers. Um, because I believe teachers are leaving the school district because they don't wanna be harnessed and, and, and be labored with teaching things like racism.
Violence in our schools. There's tons of teachers that had to be taken off of being a teacher and put on other work because of the damage that they've had, had from a child. The disrespect of the children is also a problem. And then with the NRS statute where it, both the children would get in trouble, even the victim.
Right. So you know, we just wanna increase awareness of parents of, of the uh craziness that is happening at different locations throughout the Truckee Meadows in our schools. We want everybody to be on high alert and to understand where we are at. And that, that is fundamental to changing the school board. The school board must be changed from the top down. We need, we need systemic change. And so what Melanie says about dumping these, these um committees, right? And then share. So I know that, that share, um, a lot of parents know that term. That's Sexual Health and Reproductive Education. That program starts in fourth grade.
Um, they're gonna be voting on it after the election, whether it starts in fourth and fifth grade. So they're changing it. And, but they're waiting till after the election to do that obvious, for obvious reasons.
Okay. And so share is one of the, you know, you know, trigger points for you. I mean, I'm just gonna use the word trigger, right? I'm triggered by so many things lately. Um, but you are passionate about share. Why?
Because I want to protect my daughter. I feel like share is taking the innocence away from our children. They're sexual, sexualizing our children. There's, I don't know if, I mean, they only allow a certain amount of time for you, for the parents to actually look at the materials and then it gets deleted. So the only way you can keep that information is by.
Downloading it?
I, I snap, like I snapshotted on my phone, like the pictures, like it's cartoon characters. And they wanna, they wanna keep boys and girls in the same room.
At fourth grade, so these would be eight and nine year olds if it passes. And they will see um, really descriptive cartoon pictures of children with their legs spread.
Yes.
And uh, learning about parts of their anatomy that wouldn't really need to be engaged until they're much older in life. Those are parts that, how did you put it? We wouldn't even really be. You got a great way of explaining it.
Well, there's cer- certain things I don't wanna say, but uh, just because there's a child in the room. But um, what did I, what did I say?
We can edit it. Uh, well, well, let's just put it this way. For an eight and nine year old to be learning about um.
Oh.
Places.
So the uh, 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 stuff I wouldn't even teach my boys. And it's something that I've said multiple times is it, that's for their significant other to teach them about those parts.
There you go. So pick up that, that, what we're throwing down. Yeah, for sure. Yeah. So it's inappropriate at that age. And that's what we mean when we say sexualizing children, sexualizing children.
And people like, people get mad for people saying this, but they're grooming our children. And so it's gonna make it easier for our children to be taken advantage of by an adult. And I don't know if you guys seen the videos about now it's no long, uh, this is in our school district, but how the people are trying to say it's no longer uh pedophilia. It's called MAP. So minor attracted person. I'm sorry, that's disgusting. And that is a mental disorder. Like that, like that person needs help. And the fact that they're normal, normalizing all this stuff is just bizarre, bizarre. I don't understand why anybody is going along with any of this.
Neither do I. And you know, when people hear this, if they hear it for the first time, they'll think, what? You know, they might think, this sounds like a conspiracy. It's absolutely not a conspiracy theory. And everybody needs to be fully aware of how bad it is because we all need to garner our forces together and stop it. Um, a child doesn't need to be focusing on what creates a super pleasure moment in their life when they're eight.
That was a good word.
Okay, so that's what, that's what Melanie means when she says grooming. You don't tell an eight year old how to, how to self-pleasure. Excuse me? And a Zoom call that I just witnessed, a, a, a young male teacher was on a Zoom call um, telling children what a MAP is, Minor Attracted Person, and how that is not, you know, uh, uh, an outlier. That is not something to be afraid of. You know, this was a teacher on a, on a Zoom. Another young lady teacher I saw um, in one of the Idaho um, school districts was on a Zoom with two other teachers. And she was explaining to them how she uses cartoon to express to children that porn is nothing to be looked down upon. It's nothing bad. It is just an expression of their natural sexuality. Okay. Not for a child. Porn is not for a child. No teacher should be going there. That is what we mean by grooming. So you, you, you know, you just have to, you gotta think deeply on this and you gotta connect the dots. And we need to totally take a stand against this. So, all right, um, moving on, um. So I just wanted to read something. A recent article in the Reno Gazette Journal, which was published on September sixteenth by the Chair of the Democratic Party of Washoe County, expressed an opinion regarding School Board Trustee incumbent Jeff Church. And the Democratic Chair said, Jeff Church is undermining the process of supporting educational professionals and students by opposing extra additional funding to retain more staff. So you know, Melanie, given the enrollment numbers throughout the district are down, they, they say it's ten percent. But I believe um, from hearing from a principal um, at one of the elementary schools and hearing from other folks that it's close, it's between ten and twenty percent. If that's the case and enrollment is down, then do we need more teachers? Do we need much more funding from the taxpayers for teachers?
We don't need more funding. We have, we have a billion dollar budget.
Almost one point four billion.
Went over, it was a thirty five million dollars over on one of their schools. Why are they continuing to build all these? Uh, those schools are beautiful. Don't get me wrong. But why so much money? Cause I, I, I mean, I'm not gonna tear down my house when it's too old and rebuild it. No, I'm just gonna maintain it. But like what they did, they're tearing down the O'Brien School. And there's not like any extras really square footage from what I'm, from talking to the contractors.
Okay, yeah. So it's almost like they have money to blow. So let's spend it.
And not only that, we have, uh, we have a top-heavy district. We have ten thousand um, employees with Washoe County School District. Only thirty five hundred of them are teachers. The rest are non-teachers. So in the top five hundred in our school district makes like over altogether makes like, I think it was, I forgot how many billion, I mean, million dollars, you know, and they're making a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars a year when our teachers can barely survive on our forty thousand dollars a year.
Right.
And I spoke to another teacher that was a teacher for, I think, twelve years. And she's only gotten, I think, four thousand dollar raise in that twelve years for a year.
So we have an inordinate, inordinate pie slice of administrators who don't actually educate. So we have a huge chunk compared to the whole pie of people that are sitting behind a desk doing, we, you know, whatever. And those people are pulling in two hundred K, one hundred and fifty K, one hundred and twenty five K. When your educators, who are, those are the heroes and the heroines, those are the ones bringing up your kids, helping to bring up your kids. They are, they are not being compensated anywhere near what the administrators are being compensated.
And we have principal, vice principal, dean of students. Like, why do we need all that at an elementary school? Like, it makes no sense. I mean, when I was growing up, the princ, like, the principal and stuff took care, care of all the administration and, and a secretary. Why do you need more than that?
Mm hmm, mm hmm. All these extra programs to administer and run programs and committees. But those are not driving our, our result higher. We're not getting better, you know, graduating, you know, academic levels with all that. Um. So here's another, another thought from um, an individual who's on the board. Um, there was a News and Review, Reno News and Review article from August twenty ninth of this year um, that painted parents who are concerned, caring parents who are concerned about their kids and what's being taught in school as all being in one party. And it was the party of the far right. That's what this article said. Um, we know that the governor, the, the new governor in Virginia won his race by speaking directly to concerned parents who were actually, shockingly, in more than one party. And those people across party lines voted him in, um, and because that was their issue. They were so concerned about what was being taught in school. So I have a question for you. It's based on Ellen Minneto's comment in that same article I referenced. When she was asked by a reporter, um, the reporter said, why is there outrage on the part of parents? And I, you know, assuming parents who are attending these school, school board meetings all across the country. Ellen Minneto's response was, quote, I think it's because they are afraid, afraid of change, afraid of the future, end quote. Do you think that, that that's what parents are afraid of? Parents are afraid of the future?
No, well, yeah. Yeah, we are afraid of what they're doing to our children and the future of our country. Yes, we are afraid and that's why we attended it. And I know the administrat, administration went after school board parents, FBI would not call on us domestic terrorists. I don't know how to say that either, but. Um, but I, I was followed home from a school board meeting by one of the police officers.
So it's like, there is this entire disconnect between current school board members and the press who paint caring parents who are rightfully enraged about what is being taught to their kids as extremists, right-wingers. When, when, when we're all across the party lines, we're independents, we're nonpartisans, we're Democrats and we're Republicans, but we're painted as far right. Let's demonize the right. Anybody who belongs to the conservative side of the spectrum, let's demonize them. And we're gonna use this issue to do it. Um, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be painted as, as domestic terrorists. So if you're a parent that hears this and is offended by what your kids are being taught, um, that's what you're labeled as. That's what the press calls you. That's what the school board calls you. Okay, that's what Merrick Garland calls you.
And prior to, prior to COVID, I never went to a county commissioner meeting. I never went to a school board meeting. Like, I never went to any of that. COVID hit, we see what's going on, we see what they did to our businesses and all, everything like that. That's when I got active and started voicing my opinion. Prior to that, um, I dropped out of Spanish from, like, the first week because they wanted me to say the alphabet in front of the class. Like, I've never spoken out. I've, I've always voted, but you know, like, I, prior to COVID, I was not an activist. I was not any of this. I was just a mom, a wife, you know, and taking care of our family. That's it. And we voted. That's about all we did.
Mm hmm, right. And I just feel like all the articles that I have read about Ms. Melanie Sutton here paint her to be like a loose cannon. If you read up on, on how the press covers her, more so than the other two school board candidates that are running, Colleen Westlake and Graham Reed. Remember those names, vote for those folks, because they're all like-minded with, with Melanie and want change, to go back to academics. But they paint Melanie that way, which, look at Melanie. Listen to how she speaks. Look at how she presents herself. She is not a loose cannonball. Uh, does she own a firearm? Who doesn't own a firearm in Nevada? Many, many people own firearms. Thank you. We have a second amendment for that. So just because she has a firearm doesn't make her a loose cannon. It makes her someone who is interested in protecting her family. That's what that is. So, um, so yeah, I, I agree with you. If, if parents are coming out in emotion, it doesn't mean that they're loose cannons. It means that they're frightened of what is being put upon their children. And that makes them loving, protective, responsible parents. Um, so, um. I, I just wanted to touch on as we start to wrap this up. When, when you spent two years going to these school board meetings, and I know they're not like a thirty minute meeting. I mean, you're committing like, you know, tell us, how long are they? What does it feel like when you go to a school? How are you treated?
Well, when I was, when I was going to the school board meetings, there was a good year that school board meetings weren't over until ten, sometimes two o'clock in the morning. And it started at two.
Two in the afternoon until two in the morning, or midnight or late hours? And is that because there were so many parents out there to say, hey, 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 stop, 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 stop?
Yes.
Okay. And then when, when you do all that during your public comment and you're given three minutes and the school board doesn't respond because it's public comment time, it's, it's your time to talk. It's, it's not an engagement back and forth period. But with that though, how do you feel parents are received? Have we made progress with all that feedback from the taxpayers who pay the salaries of these teachers?
I wouldn't be running. I wouldn't be running if they were listening to all of us parents. And I am running and I do wanna listen to the parents and I would like to have quarterly town halls. That way there is an engagement with the parents and myself.
Mm hmm.
And um, in the last two years, Angie Taylor has done one. Probably almost three years. I'm not sure what she did before that, but I think it should, we need to be all here from our community and find out where they're at on everything, what they want their children to be learning. It, it needs to be parental rights. They're taking the parental rights away from us.
You know, and these meetings might not need to go to midnight if they would just listen the first time, the thirteenth time, the twentieth time.
Come back.
We would, there would be no need, you know, it's, it's, um, we're just not being heard. It's not that we wanna hijack. We, we want to be heard. And I know, uh, I think Ron DeSantis, I, I'm gonna have to check on that. But I know that there was just um, a state constitution, I believe, that was amended that um, basically said, and, and maybe I'll put that in the comments down below. I'll get it straight. That the parents are the first reference point for educational choices in the schools, period. It is the parents.
They're my kids. I'm the one that, ten months in my tummy, like, most of my kids were two, two weeks late. But I'm the one, and I'm the one that pushed them out. So if they're my kids and I want my kids to be raised the way I want them to raise, I want them to have my values, my principles. And then when they're adults, they can make the difference however they believe. But as long as they're underneath my roof, I, I wanna guide them to be good, good kids, successful adults.
Right. So values, teaching those things is at the home front. That's where that happens, is at the home. It's the academics that are taught at the school.
That's all a school is supposed to be, to train, to educate and train our children to be successful adults. That's it. Nothing else. Get all the politics out of it. I don't care what anybody's politics are. That doesn't need to be in the classroom. When I was growing up, I didn't even know what my mom was or my dad. I, they didn't talk politics.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
So I didn't even know what I was until I got married to my husband. Actually, nine eleven is what changed my, uh, made me more aware of what's going on, yeah.
Right, right, sure, of course.
I had a four-year-old son and I thought the world was ending.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, yeah, for sure. That was.
He just turned twenty-five.
Yay, fantastic, fantastic. So, um, I think the last place to go in this podcast um, is the topic of these SEL surveys that are going on in the schools um, throughout Nevada and other states as well. And SEL stands for Social Emotional Learning. And these are surveys that are being given out um, that the teachers ask the kids questions about. I'm gonna list the topics that the surveys cover. And this is according to um, a website called CourageIsACabot.org. I just encourage all parents to go to CourageIsACabot.org. So these are the topics of the SEL, SEL surveys. Sexuality, socioeconomic status in the home. So how much money do the parents of the student have? Beliefs and spirituality of the parents and the child, gender ideology. Because that is crucial to passing a grade, right? Behaviors and attitudes, parents' political affiliation. So those are the six that the website mentions that are covered in these SEL surveys that are going on in Washoe County and Clark County and, and, and so forth. Um. So that's a partial list. And these surveys are done in the name of SEL. In other words, mental health. That's what a school will tell you. We focus on mental health. We are, we are taking care of our children's mental health. We survey them. And we ask them all these questions about their parents' political party. And, you know, how much money their parents have. Okay. And so are you familiar, are you able to share anything with that about?
Yeah, the social emotional learning, um, uh, that adds to your data collecting as well, which will follow the child all the way through. So they take all the information, how they act in school, and that's just gonna follow them through their, uh, up to getting a job. I don't agree with social. I know a lot of teachers do agree with social emotional learning. Um, I, all I think is it's doing is weakening our children. Um, we should be building our children up. I went to a great event uh, two Saturdays ago, I think. It was Level Up and I thought it was amazing. The speaker, Angie Taylor was one of the speakers and she did amazing. And so I'm like, why aren't we doing this in our schools? Like, we should be training our children to look at the stars. They need to, they need to go towards the stars, you know? Just because they don't make it there doesn't mean they're a failure.
They might make it to the moon.
Yeah, so yeah, I mean, I, I think it's just bringing our children down. And then this started with giving all, everybody a trophy for just playing rather than, you know, being the best. We need our children to, to strive for the best. But if they don't make it, then that's okay.
Mm hmm. Level up. Well, we can put that in the comments if parents wanna take a look at that and maybe borrow some of their ideas. Because they may need to be encouraging their care, kiddos to strive toward excellence since the schools don't seem to be doing that. And I, and I congratulate Angie Taylor for being a speaker there. Um, but it would be more helpful perhaps to incorporate. Um, but it would be more helpful perhaps to incorporate, you know, that in the schools, level up. Um, so, um, I would just say that it's really disturbing to have data collected and harvested on your child about that. Of course, we all want our kids to have positive mental health. Um, but I would say again, that that's more of a parental at-home thing. Um, but there, there's general things that can, can go toward positive mental health at school that don't inc- include surveying on a periodic systemic basis and storing that data. You know, so you can talk about excellence. You can talk about positivity and striving and, and building kids up that way. But um the data is not accessible by certain positions. Like a principal, I understand, may not necessarily have access to the survey data, but the school counselor. Okay, the school counselor now has access to all this information. And in conjunction with that, our schools have gender curriculum plans. So if you have a child that you have surveyed and you see that um their beliefs about sexuality or sexual activity sometimes, um.
Or even if the home, at home is dysfunctional, or there's something going on at home where they could, child could be taken advantage of.
Now that, now the counselor has, is privy to this information, the counselor could bring the child in and present a gender curriculum plan option to that child. Oh, you know, you're, you're concerned about, you don't fit in. You feel like maybe you feel awkward in your body, maybe you're a different sex. Well, we have gender curriculum plans and we can talk to you about which bathroom to use and, you know, which locker room and we can sit down. And in Washoe County, the teachers are not required to call the parent and tell them that little Susie Q has now embarked upon a gender transitioning plan, a gender curriculum plan. So the parent wouldn't even know that, that, that their child is now considering transitioning. Okay, why would a parent not be told that by the school? The school puts the plan out there and then does not tell the parent that the child is going on the plan. What does that sound like to you? Does that sound transparent, above-board? That sounds like some sneaky garbage to me. You're gonna present that to my child? You're gonna introduce that i- idea? And, 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 and ask my child if they wanna transition and give them a plan and not tell me? That is insanity. And everybody listening, you need to email your principal. I don't want a gender curriculum plan in my school. And, 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 and if my child is, if that is promoted to my child, you better call me and tell me that my child is, is talking to you about that. Um, so parents need to take control back. And when you say parent rights, that is at a storm level. That is going all across our country. Parental rights is a huge topic. Um, and so as we close on that, um, do we have parental rights in Nevada?
No, they, I mean, that, look what they're doing behind our backs. And not telling, and a lot of us didn't even know what they were doing until COVID happened when we were teaching our children at home. Then that's what we were seeing on the Zoom calls and, and the packets that you'd get where, um, they wanted, what was, I don't remember. But it, it was the social emotional wording and the entire week was focused on that one word. It.
Yeah, so.
Like, it doesn't make any sense. Like, we should be teaching our kids math, reading, spelling, history. History is very important, civics. My, that, my daughter, I mean, she's very, she's ten, ten years old and I've been home going on three years and I have her reading the Tuttle Twin books for the teenagers. She started with the little ones, but now she reads the teenage ones.
Fantastic. You know, and um, we, we talked about this on the other Meet Your Candidates. But if you want to pull your kids out of Washoe County for a while, while we get things straightened out, um, or, or attempt to, um, you can. There are micro.
Not as hard as you think it is. I mean, I thought I was gonna screw my daughter up by homeschooling her, you know, but.
But now she's reading at high school level.
Yeah, junior high probably.
Junior high, maybe.
Yeah.
So it can be done and there's tons of resources out there. You can contact Washoe GOP at eight two seven nineteen hundred if you want resources on micro schooling, having your kids be in a micro school, uh, like a pod of families. Um, so you don't have to have a teaching credential to do this. Some of these pods hire out a credential teacher to, to run that pod school. Um, but others just, you know, gather their resources of, of experts in a, in a subject matter. And they might have five people covering the school that can cover different topics of the school. So. Okay, we wanna conclude today by just thanking Melanie Sutton for coming on the podcast.
Thank you.
Thank you for um caring enough to attend all these five, six, seven, eight hour meetings and then deciding to run and get involved and run as a change candidate for the school board. Melanie's website once again is S U T T O N Sutton for, F O R, Washoe County School District dot com. W C S D dot com. And if folks wanna support you um on the ballot this November eighth, um, or, or early voting, that's great. We want that to happen. But is there anything else that they can do to help you?
Phone calls, walking, we need to get our name out there. Obviously, it takes a lot of work trying to get your name recognized and just let, let people know. Cause my opponent was appointed, but is considered an incumbent. So most of the time they win.
Right, and that's a whole nother show, is why are people just inserted into these elected positions? With no special election, they're just there. Friend of a friend is put in, they're not voted for. And so your opponent is Mr. Rodriguez. Okay, so remember Melanie Sutton's name, contact her website. Click on the volunteer button or the donate button, whatever you wanna do. And let's help her get elected this fall. Thank you, Melanie.